Yeah, I'm Gary Price. I'm consultant for contract planning for the city. And I'm helping with the general plan.
I'm Julie Berger. I'm the assistant planner for the city of Cleveland.
Greg Olson, city manager.
Doug Carron, public works director.
Now the answers to planning issues.
Cheryl Hutchinson, vice chair of planning.
Joe Spoken, planning.
Earl Williams, planning manager. This is Sean. We're going to start this off with you, Gary.
Okay, what I thought I'd do is a PowerPoint. So everyone can kind of hopefully can see some of this in that distance. But just to orient everyone with what we're doing here tonight. And then it's really intended to be more informal. Get direction from the planning commission with some input from the public. So at some point, we're going to probably pull everything off the table here and lay some maps down and just kind of get, roll up our sleeves and kind of look at the maps and see what everybody thinks about them. But in the meantime, I want to do a little presentation here with song and dance. And we'll go from there. Joan Flippin was the city manager hiring me to do the housing element update. While the general plan update was being done by Cal Poly folks, which is a university in San Francisco. And she asked me to take a look at the general plan curiously to see if there were any issues with regards to making sure that there's consistency between all elements of the general plan and consistency with housing. And we found some inconsistencies. And then Greg came on board and looked at some of the inconsistencies with me. And we looked at, the city looked at hiring other consultants. And they ultimately chose a contract planner, myself, to do the project correctly. Though I felt it was important to engage with a number of other professional services to help guide some of the inconsistencies. So we've, you know, on my planning team, I've hired economic planning systems to help with the economic and demographic research. To make sure everything is supportable. We have capacities right with the land use mix. We have Omni Means Engineering to help with our circulation element in our circulation map and do our traffic analysis. We have Jim Brennan and Associates to do the noise analysis, do some noise contours in the city to give us, you know, make sure that when we're doing our noise element, we have the correct noise contours. And then I have Tom Corrello who is a land use planner that I worked with to do peer review of the, of the, all the, all the general plans and parts. So in terms of general plan, I think you've been through this many, many times. But just to reorient you, it's basically a policy document broad ranging to establish policies for future growth of the city, future development. So things within that would be work programs for the city over the next two thousand forty. So we're talking about long range plan. Set out basic principles for maintaining, enhancing the character of the neighborhoods. Provides city management guiding budget capital programming decisions. So it's kind of a link to our capital approval program. It states the municipal's intentions, the city's intentions for physical development and infrastructure. Communicates the citizens the type of development they want to see. Coordinates transportation infrastructure improvements over time. So that as development occurs, that we have adequate transportation. And lays out future economic and physical aspect of the future. So that things like grants and things that we really need. So, you know, I think the last time the city did the general plan was back in nineteen eighty-five. Correct me if I'm wrong, eighty-two, eighty-three? So it's, it's a bit outdated. So it really needs, needs to be looked at every, it needs to be looked at every five years at least, and then, you know, updated every ten or twelve years. So that's what we're doing. What's very important is making sure that there's consistencies within the, within the documents. There's three basic documents. There's the background report, which is really overview of everything that has to do with the, with the city. Then there's the environmental impact report, which addresses the general plan and how the general plan might impact things. What we try to do is generate what's called a self mitigating environmental impact report. So the policies and programs will be developed and the general plan mitigate the impacts to an adequate degree. And then the general plan document, which is really the guiding light for future development. And so one of the things that I found in terms of looking at the overall growth projections in the general plan document and what's required by state law in terms of our housing element and meeting their regional housing allocation, was there was, there was some, there was some inconsistency. So we needed to correct that. And so we developed some population projections. We think are fairly lenient. Gary.
They're, those, they're based on one percent per year?
Yeah, that's what we, we figured. That's kind of a, if historic growth rate over the last forty years has been about one percent.
Well, your map is incorrect.
Okay. Well, we can talk about that. But generally, that's, what I did was I took the one percent per year annually and added it up.
The problem is between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-five, it's a fifteen percent increase.
Okay.
So consequently, the whole, the whole base is, two thousand or ten percent off.
That is big one, okay. Well, we'll definitely, the Caltrans had allocated, I think, one and a half percent growth projection for the city along the highway fifty-three corridor. And I'm talking to EPS, they agree that the one percent's about right. So we'll correct that. Thank you, that's, that's a big one. Main focus areas going through the general plan, I think, the Cal Poly did an excellent job in trying and getting the vision of the community. They had a number of workshops, a lot of public participation. They came up with basically seven main focus areas. And then we added the publically a specific plan because that's one that the city's already approved. So there's Austin Park, focus on that. Olympic Drive, Lake Shore Drive, corridor gateway, Route fifty-three, the avenues, regional shopping center, the, up in Canyon, industrial park. And so the focus was on those growth areas. And then, of course, infill and revitalization along Lake Shore Drive. And so the, the identified on the map those areas of focus. And we really want to keep that idea going and rolling through. But we want to make sure that the plan is consistent and that achieves what the community's goals are. In terms of looking at what the land use mixes are and the land use plan, and we'll show a little bit later. The Cal Poly plan showed, they had a big area of just vacant land here. And didn't really identify any particular use for it. And so what we did was we developed some different residential categories and allocated, you know, land uses for every piece of property in the city. There are some discrepancies here. That's because the Cal Poly numbers of ninety acres, well, they had some added, they counted property a couple of times. Well, we have a GIS coordinator that's working directly with the county's GIS coordinator. So the numbers add up correctly. And so we have the Cal Poly map, as I mentioned, that shows kind of the vacant land and areas. And many of those areas are in difficult topographic challenging areas. Some of the areas we call environmental protection areas, roadway zones. So we created a classification of rural residential to apply for that. So we developed a slightly different map that kind of fills in those blanks. And spent quite a bit of time on it. I'll go over those in a little bit more detail. The new residential land use densities, red rural, zero to four units per acre. Low is zero to ten units per acre. And within that low, within that low density residential designation, you can do medium density, low density, very low density, less than one unit per acre, or low density, one to six, or median density of the fifteen units. And then consistent with our housing element, minimum of sixteen units, twenty-five units per acre, which was a vision in the general plan originally. And then the mixed use is primarily residential after fifteen units per acre. But encouraged, it also has opportunity for, you know, commercial development as well. We've got quite a bit of property down with that. What's critical about the land use map and getting it tied down tonight with planning commission, hopefully, is we're on a real tight timeline to get this done. And once we get the land uses tied down, then we do what's called a traffic model. And we just take each of those polygons up there and develop a land use mix for each of those polygons and develop traffic rate assumptions and apply a traffic forecast cumulatively to build out twenty, forty beyond that. And then the Omni Means develops this traffic model. We just did some traffic counts a couple of weeks ago. So we have very current traffic counts. And then they'll be able to develop a cumulative traffic impact analysis. And then from there, we'll be able to develop the types of improvements that we want for streets to reduce, reduce impacts, potential impacts if there's a problem. So then, so the next phase is looking at the circulation element. So the two critical elements in the general plan that I'm going to be looking at with you is the circulation and the land use element. And circulation element, there's a number of policies that creates, that's required by state law to create complete streets. That includes bicycles, pedestrians, transport riders, blockers, looking at different transit opportunities, making things more efficient, even looking at how subdivisions are laid out. So that there's integration of different things like trails, bike access. And then, so the circulation methodology is really important to accommodate circulation needs for two thousand forty. So like I mentioned, it's really important to dial down the land use map. And then the circulation comes in overall pie for eventual development. They can develop into a street master plan, which will lead in a capital approval program. And then fee programs, how you pay for those improvements. Eighty, sixteen hundred is the development impact fee. So the development, when it comes in, has to pay their share for those things. What we did was we took a look at all of the local circulation references. I think in your package, I referenced and actually gave you some linkages on the computer so that you could download some of these things. But what I attempted to do is basically take the plan, circulation map, and apply some of the things that have already been created. So not recreating something. And so we'll talk about that a little bit later when we pull up the maps. We'll have, there's a map for transit, some map for streets, some map for bikeways, map for trails. And so those will be discussed a little bit. In terms of, you know, improvements, to stay around fifty-three, we're talking about several things that Caltrans would like to see. We need to kind of direct that and decide what's best for our community, not necessarily what's best for Caltrans. But there's some, some good ideas, maybe talk about some roundabouts in certain locations. Local improvements, the Caltrans again identified some local connections that might help improve the north-south circulation. So people aren't so much so dependent on the highway for traffic. So those things include like the Phillips Avenue or Dan Road extension, Oak Avenue extension, Brooks Avenue extension. And those are really important and want to get local input from you. If there's something I'm missing. Doug, our public works director, already identified a number of things that we can be doing. Much better idea of what we need. And he'll present some of those ideas later on tonight. Levels of service, the proposed general plan talks about a level of service C for everything. You know, for Caltrans corridor areas, those are all levels of service C. But for our city and for what I recommend is to shoot for a level of service C, but you're not always going to get that. In some cases, you might have a level of service D. The development comes in and, you know, you've got to bring it up to C. So I've actually identified some very usable programs to allow for reduced level service in some instances where you want to get economic development and do something positive for the community in terms of creating a more economic vital community. So the, I've suggested some language for LSC, maybe inappropriate standard for Caltrans facilities, SR fifty-three. But this may not be practical threshold for other sections of the city. As with most communities in California, the consulting team would apply to all the standard C for fifty-three, but acceptable level of service would be D for other roadways. And then allow the council to make decisions for, for that. I've got a number of new policies I've suggested in your package under attachment. I think it's B for transportation element. Quite a bit more expensive than what we currently have and what's being proposed by the Cal Poly. The other part that we talked about was the noise element. And to have an attitude noise element, you really need to have noise measurements and develop noise standards based on that. I've developed some policies, new policies to apply to that. They're very general right now. Once we get the, once we get the land use dialed in, the traffic dialed in, traffic model, then we can share that information with the noise consultant and he can start generating his noise analysis based on traffic levels. And then the safety element, what we decided to do, Joan had asked me to kind of look at the newer provisions of this state government code. And there's, there's a thing that once you adopt the general plan, housing element, you really need to update your safety element. So we're doing this anyway. So I met with Calfire and we developed some new programs to address the Calfire standards. And we think they're, they're in your package as well. We think they're, they're good. And the Calfire has agreed to it. So we just, we put those in there. Conservation element requires the city to consult with Native American tribes. So that's what I did with the housing element. And we're also doing that at this level. And we met with two tribes and came up with some new language in the cultural resource section of the conservation element that have been included. And so to wrap it up, we have a timeline of trying to get the revised draft out by the end of January. So it's, you know, a lot going on to get this done. But I think we can do it. Because of there's, there's so many changes that we're proposing, we're going to be recirculating the document through the public review, through the clearinghouse for state agency comment. So that takes forty-five days. So we're probably talking about an April planning commission review and a May city council final wrap. But this, this thing has been going on for, what, three or four years? And it's really time to finish it up.
The time script just sounds very, uh, if.
It's aggressive, but I think it's, it's a can do. I think pretty much I'm diving into this. I've got my consulting team working on it. And I think, you know, the way I've got it worked out, I think we should, we should be able to do it. So at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to the chairman. Maybe get some questions answered about this. And then we'll pull up the maps and start digging into the lead a little bit.
First of all, do we have any questions?
Question. I don't see anything out of the clean water land.
Did you look at the whole, all the documents? Because the background report has a bunch of stuff in it.
Background report.
Yeah. And so the, I'm not really intending to go back and redo everything. But I have, I have taken a look at the other elements. And they look generally like they will, will work just fine. I might be doing some tweaks to some of the policies and programs. So there's consistency between the new land use and circulation elements. And so, you know, we talked about, I think we talked about doing some changes to the economic development element because of some of the recommendations we're going to get from EPS, the economic consultant. So we'll definitely be putting some emphasis on more, I think, what the city, what the city wants to see in terms of economic development. Economic development, by the way, that element is an optional element. Not required, but it's something we need, I think we need to have. And so I think it's a critical part of what we need to do in terms of general plan. And so we'll be, we'll be tweaking some of those policies. So what I'm trying to do tonight is really deal with the critical parts of the general plan, which really the backbone, the land use and circulation. And then kind of overview some of the things I've done recently with the, with the noise element and conservation element and safety.
Other question, why, why did you, so the median density was kind of wrapped up all in that one category?
Yeah. Yeah, so what we, what I plan to do with that is we'll identify certain areas that we want for median density in the zoning map.
Isn't it though from, you said from zero to one per acre to ten per acre?
You can get up to fifteen units per acre in low density.
That's not low density in my book.
But it's implemented by the, by the zoning code. So zoning maps can be implemented at that. And so basically, and I brought the zoning map here for you to look at. But basically, we'd be honoring existing median density areas. And we would identify certain areas we want to have the median density.
I think first of all, it's, it's too big of a spread. Zero to one per acre to fifteen per unit is all around thirteen to one. I mean, development standards are going to be totally different.
Yes, sir.
One per acre or fifteen per acre. So I think it should be separated in.
Okay, well, I appreciate the comment. I think the zoning, the standards you're talking about come out of the zoning code. And so we would develop a much more detailed level, you know, standards for development in the zoning code.
But if the general plan is going to designate these areas in a dead larger of a spread, I think you're going to have difficulties, difficulties demanding certain improvements to come in.
Well, what we can do is we can spread the land use map out. And I can show you where the, the map identifies in the zoning code, the zoning map, where those areas are identified as median density. And we can identify those that have, you know, participation.
Anybody else in the commission?
On your timeline, you have, you know, saying that ultimately that's the final date of T. There will be an update of the commission program. But I have that.
Okay.
That's right down there at the bottom.
Yeah.
The date of T.
Yeah.
That's the ultimate.
The ultimate.
I'm not sure what I was thinking at that point. I stole this timeline from another timeline. I think that's by that one.
The ultimate date of T.
The ultimate date of T.
Yeah, okay. Tentative, reform.
Ultimate date of termination.
And we just updated our zoning code. So I guess in, in, I guess, because we just updated the zoning code, we need to do an amendment. Well, it depends on how we decide. Is the zoning code, I think you worked on that.
Well, we haven't, we're, I've, I've been contracted to do the zoning code update. But I haven't, we did our first workshop on that, I think in July. And then, then we started looking more carefully at the general plans. And we, we better get the general plan done first. So that's why that's been put out before.
I did sit in on some of the workshops with Cal State. And yeah, it wasn't that good. It's good that someone, um, that there's some things that have to be addressed.
We want to make sure it's adequate. When people come to the counter and they identify a parcel, we want to make sure they know that parcel is what they, it's residential.
Just get their copy that out now.
Here.
Okay, do you have any questions from the audience?
I did, I did want to let you know I passed out a letter from Dennis Darling to the commission so that they have a record of all that. So Dennis is here.
Good evening, everybody. So I've got a couple of little questions in here on the, on the document, but.
Dennis, excuse me, in case somebody doesn't know who you are, if you could identify yourself.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm Dennis Darling. I have food, et cetera, here in town. So Gary, you made the comment that we're on a tight timeline. This thing's been sitting around now for a long time. Why are we suddenly on a tight timeline?
Well, maybe, Greg, we just need, want to get this thing done.
Yeah, one of the goals of the city council was to get the general plan update done. And so we're trying to get it done.
When we set, when Joan was here, we set our goals and objectives. That was one of the top, top ones.
That makes sense to me. I, I just wondered, I mean, it seems like it's been, that there hasn't been much going on for quite a long time. So that, that comment led me to believe that there's some, something that needs to be accomplished with this update. I mean. No?
Yes, that's, that's it, it's the goal.
Okay. You're trying to meet the council's goal of actually getting the things in. Did they, did they initially establish a timeline? Did the council establish a time that they wanted to accomplish the goal?
I don't believe so are priorities. It doesn't have any kind of timelines. And our goals don't have a timeline.
Okay. On your attachment A, I think that, you know, one of my big questions here is that you're kind of opening up part of the, the document for review and change. But you're not doing that for the entire document.
Actually, yeah, my, my plan was to. Actually, yeah, my plan was to look at all the elements and adjust accordingly to make sure there's internal consistency.
Okay, so will that be done in a workshop format or...
My idea is to just, you know, I'm not thinking that there's going to be huge tweaks to the rest of the document. So if I get, I can get this all nailed down tonight, I think we could go with a traffic study.
But it will eventually come back to the planning commission.
Yeah, it will be, it will be coming back to the commission to review and consider and recommend to the city.
If you're back on how many people, it's 10% less as far as my quick calculations are. Isn't that fact everything?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So everything gets scaled down by 10%.
Traffic, yeah.
Traffic, housing, commercial.
In terms of build out, you know, in terms of that timing, yes. But in terms of bill, that doesn't. So ultimately, this has been kind of lasted until the end of 2021.
Beyond.
Good. I mean, what happened to last?
Turned a little bit on. So I think that that was, you know, frankly, that's one of the main points I wanted to make tonight is it seems to me that there's a lot of issues with the document that Cal Poly generated. I mean, you've identified some. I, you know, I happen to think that under attachment A here, that these different areas of development, I don't think that that's consistent with the public input and I have it all along. And I'm not, I'm not really seeing you guys talk about addressing that at all. So I just wonder if that's going to happen at some point.
Well, what happens with these documents, as you well know, they're hard to follow for folks that aren't really involved in, in planning. And it's very easy for something to slip through and then they realize later that that's a different issue. And it does make it rather difficult to get good feedback all the time from those that aren't used to planning vocabulary. And it makes it much more difficult. Anytime that we've got a situation like Dennis is talking about, I think that's something that needs to be considered seriously, that there may be some places there that maybe we need to take another look at.
Absolutely. I know we're open to making changes. I'm not sure we have the budget to redo all the public participation, but that's really a judgment call in the city. I was tasked to just finish the document up based on the vision that Cal Poly folks had come up with and I was under the impression, that's contrary to your impression, that the document has a good vision.
Well, I think if you go actually in the background document, I think you'll see it there. Now, it's a, you know, I asked Andrew Slodg through today and he kind of laughed at me. You know, I mean, you're talking about hundreds of pages of information. I mean, it's just overwhelming, the three documents that you're talking about. But, you know, having been part of that process as we went through, you know, my thoughts on it all along has been that, you know, it wasn't that the draft general plan update that they presented was not really consistent with what public input was. But I think that really my, maybe my concern here is, you know, has the underlying methodology of the current document really been examined? You know, you found a lot of issues with this document. What else is wrong in there? And, you know, we're going to live with this for a long, long time. Best have it right. So, you know, really ultimately, that's, that's my input to you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Robyn?
Well, I would just like to agree with what Dennis said. I'm concerned about the speed here. What action are you asking the planning commission to take this evening? Anything?
Well, I'd just like to get some direction from them on the land use map primarily to see if, you know, we're heading in the right directions to develop the, you know, the traffic analysis.
The traffic analysis?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The document I was given doesn't have any colors, so I couldn't really tell what the land use map is. But walking over here and looking at this red area here, you're recommending that this be designated a specific plan.
Obviously.
Because there was a specific plan adopted for it. However, in your document, you also talk about you want to be consistent and you've got policies in there that talk about, I'd have to go over and read it, but I found two or three specific policies that are not consistent with allowing a high density residential development here where there's no water, sewer, electricity, or anything else. The city was bamboozled into this in the first place and it needs to be corrected and this is the process. This is the time to do it. It shouldn't have been a specific plan in the first place. It should have been a general plan of development. And I'd like a chance to get into that in more detail.
Do you have a question, Charlie?
Yeah, I was just wondering if that was proposed.
There was a specific plan?
Yeah, it was adopted in the city council as a, I think a development agreement on it.
As a development agreement, so it's, we talked, is that a, is it just a tentative map or a vested...
It allocates residential, I wouldn't call it high density. I would say that the things that I would put in the general plan would be that whatever, if it gets developed, has to be immediate impacts. You know, you've got to provide the streets, they've got to provide the infrastructure.
Do I understand there's a specific plan and there's a tentative map, approved tentative map?
No, there's no tentative.
There's no tentative.
No, thanks, is it?
If I could just add one more sentence or two. The thing about the general plan is, you know, it's your blueprint for your future growth and it's supposed to make sense. To take a project that didn't make sense in the first place, but was put through and then memorialize it is...
Well, it's already in our general plan. So if, it's in the 1983 general plan, it hasn't ended. So the question is, do you want to retract that?
It was resource conservation, if I recall.
It was.
Yeah.
It was. The question is whether you want to mix it. Does the city want to mix that? And that's going beyond, you know, what we're, I'm trying to do here.
I understand that, but I also understand that this is a tricky issue and it needs to be discussed and everybody needs to really weigh it and think about it. It's not something to be done lightly. Updating the general plan is an opportunity for the city to correct mistakes and to adjust things so that they go, the development goes in the direction that the city wants it to go and it makes sense. It's a way to avoid being challenged as making a taking. That's why I'm bringing it up, otherwise I wouldn't be here right now.
Be interesting to see what the attorneys would say.
If there is a specific plan, I was talking about city now, in a development agreement or in no tentative map?
No.
That sounds odd. How can you develop a specific plan in a development agreement not based on block land or anything?
I think they have some concepts to that. Concepts, they have some concepts, but...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they have concepts, but they don't have a tentative. Tendon map basically implements residential development, land development screening. That was, I wasn't here when it happened, but I would assume that that would be their next step.
Because it was controversial for the low income versus the pathways and the tree and everything and they just...
Our recorded engineers, I can get stall pick.
Yeah.
At the...
And when you get to a tentative map level, then you're talking about a much higher level of environmental...
Right, but it is a development agreement. And how can you have a development agreement if you don't know what development is?
So you have, you have some units approved and it can be developed later. I'm just talking about the...
And they kept changing. I mean, it was like 600 units and then 18 whole and then it went from nine to nine. There was even talking about having a phase control and stuff like that.
There was a lot of change.
There was a lot of change.
Whatever comes out of that is going to be different. I don't believe it would develop that way.
Yeah, the golf course was mixed because of the water. Oh, it changed so, yeah. But they wanted it open green space and then at that point we were doing tree ordinance and taking out trees and stuff. Yeah. So, yeah, it was, it was thrown in the air and had a lot of...
The idea is just to recognize a specific plan there. We could put some policies in there saying, well, we need to revisit that. Or we could say, we don't want a specific plan there. We want it to be resource...
Something doesn't matter. If you have a development agreement, you don't have to have vested rights to develop from it. Based on what?
Based on council approval. I need to look at that. I cannot tell you for sure exactly what was approved. I know they have a specific plan.
Well, it's gone on for what, 20 years now?
No, I don't think it's been quite that long, but...
Nineteen and a half.
Probably for 15.
Yeah, it's, it's been going on for quite a long time.
Well, and besides all the issues that came up from it, then the funding for it was also an issue for the developer and I don't know how many times, yeah, he was going to go ahead and then he wasn't going to go ahead and...
And, yeah.
There was a lot of...
Regulations changed and people, employers, employees changed and...
And part of the problem we had at the time too was that the general plan was outdated. And had it gone ahead, we probably would have ended up in a lawsuit.
I don't know. I don't know Victoria's number.
I'm not going to say names about anybody.
Well, okay. PR club had a lot to say about what was going on up there because it was conservation priority two and then the zoning change.
And there was a lot of question, also off your... Yeah. Cheryl Brown, she, the certification, that kind of thing.
Yeah. And all of that...
That was a, that was a big portion of it. The biggest part of that whole housing element is they were way too close to the slough. There was no way they were going to get that through on corporate engineers. One department said, no. And it's bought it, bought it, bought it, bought it and it's took the ground. Then the cultural side got involved and, you know, there's a lot of issues over there that wanted to sort.
If it's just, if it's just taking that out of the general plan, not recognizing the specific plan, we need to do a little more research and it's early to do that.
I think that's...
A reasonable approach.
I don't know. But it is...
They're just starting to get things moved that come to us.
They spent our college property in the White and Amrose and things, yeah, there's starting to... A lot on this. Yeah, at times. And then the traffic survey that they did because it was only going to be right-hand turns out of there, shift for buses during the week, it's hours of, and I thought, my God, it's Sam's show.
Well, I know if we were to get a proposal in, you'd have to do an EMI, go through the whole process. We wouldn't be accepting everything.
But that doesn't have certain criteria attached to it, so, yeah, we need to know what that is and see what it is, what the development...
And if there's no development agreement, maybe we could just remove it from the general plan. So it has to be a conscious effort by the commission to, has to be there.
I think we need to know what the development agreement is, it came out. Designated as you said, the plan or the general...
We can take a part, do a portion of research.
Yeah. Do an hour?
Well, then it gives time to kind of clear the, to go off and put the maps up.
Okay, so we'll take a...
Any other question?
Was there any other questions? Yes.
Anybody else in the audience have any other questions? Okay, in that case, we will take a break.
Take a 10 minute break?
Yeah.
Yeah. This is a lot of... Thursday, two hours.
It's a very controversial thing.
Sure, you should... Now that we're working with them. So Julie and I, to some extent Greg went through this mapping process and, you know, tried to kind of look realistically at what the vision was for the general plan and then identify the land uses accordingly. For example, there was an emphasis on mixed use in the general plan, but the, the map only showed five acres of mixed use. But I'm sure that the idea was to expand that. So we expanded and created more mixed use. We have, what, over 100 acres? We went from five acres to...
Thirty-one acres.
No, well, that's just, that's just the vacant, but we have more than that. We have, um, I think that's where we... It's, the table with the...
Is that page three? Table two?
Table two. It's next to this one. Here it is. So the original Cal Poly mixed use was only five acres. I mean, the emphasis was something more creative, yeah. And so...
And what you're saying...
We identified areas that really needed, you know, the old general plan, too. We identified areas that really lend itself well to mixed use, that had a lot of residential development, some commercial buildings. So we identified 234 acres of mixed use versus five acres. And then the commercial, their proposal was 242 acres of commercial and this is a little bit more aggressive with 355 acres of commercial because we identified more areas that should lend itself, we had for commercial. For...
Can I just interrupt for a second?
That's up to, that's up to the chairman.
Gary, can you speak?
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I just wonder, you know, are there standards for that? I mean, when you guys, I mean, are there typical planning standards that you use to establish that sort of thing?
Well, what we did was we, we looked at what's, what's out there. We looked at our zoning. We looked at what the Cal Poly folks have proposed and then we looked at the neighborhood. And so, you know, what potentially could develop there given the streets and infrastructure? There's really no magical way of doing that method of, you know...
No standard methodology?
Yeah, but kind of look at the vision of what, what the community wanted from the public participation process and try to generate more of what they, what the community wanted. So that's what we did. So we looked at parcel by parcel, a lot of cases where there was an existing development there. It was like that there's a propane storage area that was, you know, commercial and it's residential and we really want to keep it residential. You know, and then there's other areas where there's kind of a transition going into commercial. So we wanted to identify those commercial and have more respect for the zoning, existing zoning. So, you know, there are some spots that you see that have commercial spots in it, but we felt like, you know, those aren't going to change to residential. You know, they'll probably stay as commercial. And then we identified ISO areas that, you know, maybe would be better to make it residential and not honor commercial. So we identified these things.
But if you, if it's now zoned, commercial and the general plan is going to show residential, so then it becomes a non-performant use?
No, it doesn't become non-performant use unless the zoning's changed. And when the zoning is changed to be consistent with the general plan, then it becomes a non-performant use. We're going to develop news, stands for non-performing scenarios. We're going to, I really want to emphasize the work that we do on, in the zoning code because... because we'll be doing the performance standards more so than we have right now. You know, we have this basic, very, you know, fundamental zoning standards like setbacks and building heights. But I want to be looking at floor area ratios so that, you know, you can adjust the coverage on a lot. I want to be looking at, you know, allowing taller buildings with greater setbacks. Performances. If you have a taller building, you have a greater setback. Things like that are, that kind of self-mitigate impacts to neighbors. So I'll be emphasizing a lot more on the zoning. So to me, this, this is, I'm trying to just, trying to create something simple for the community that, that addresses the vision. And so that's what we came up with. I like your idea of making, this is really a city environment. It's not really a rural environment. We've probably made the mistake of calling this rural residential and allowing up to four units per acre. Most of this area is what we call environmental protection or what, what's the name of that?
Resource.
Resource protection. And so we would, you know, my thought was we'd have the zero to four units to the acre, but we would apply an overlay zone that would have higher performance standards for environmental protection. So the zoning code becomes much more important for implementation. We rely more on the zoning than the general plan. So the general plan becomes basically a general description of the vision of the community as opposed to trying to zone things specifically. And so we can change this to very low density. And if we want, we have agricultural zoning that allows for horses and crop production. And the zoning map does show a few areas that are agriculture and that would deal with that kind of question.
No, that's okay. One thing that this map does not show is everything right here in Baldwin. And this is all bad.
Right.
I think it falls under, oh, sorry. I think it falls under the Williamson map.
Yeah. And it's not in the city.
Yes, I know.
But in our, in our background report, which by the way is a pretty good source of information, does identify all of those parcels that are within Williams isn't packed around, so. So, you know.
That's a non-funded mandate though, I think.
What's that?
Williamson is non-funded mandate, I guess.
I don't, I don't know.
But all that area gets a lot. So whether you call it that or not, it's part of our sphere of influence.
Yes.
And we do need to take it into consideration for what we're, we're doing up next to it.
Now, something to consider is the, the current sphere of influence goes up and around here somewhere. It's in the plan. But LAFCO has requested and we kind of concur that the sphere of influence, the area isn't going to be urbanized anytime soon. It's pretty much rural territories, rough grades, steep topography. And we've got enough on our plate for the next 30 years to handle without having to think about annexation. So they've asked us to just make the sphere of influence the same as the city values. And we, I tend to agree with it. Why go beyond that? At some point, maybe after 2040, we can start looking if the city prospers, start looking at going into Lower Lake and serving this community with, with services. But we don't have the capacity to do that right now. So part of the general plan project description is to contract the boundaries of the sphere of influence. And so once we get the general plan done, then LAFCO can approve the new sphere of influence, which is the city values. I've got some really good comments from Dirk. This is, I, I thought this is a school and we, so we need to make that residential instead of commercial. So if we, if, so if you see something out here that jumps out at you, there was a spot over here that appeared to be, we had identified as commercial because the zoning called for commercial. We looked at it from a Google map. Dirk says that's actually residential. So we can change that. So if you see something like that, those are the kinds of things I'm looking for. Relative to the question about this property here, I don't think there is a development agreement. The intent was to follow up with a development agreement.
Natalie was checking on that.
Yeah, I was trying to look. In fact, I also called it, and I'm sure they're glad I have the numbers of the planners during that time and the director. And I understand 2007, there wasn't one who was there. The director didn't recall seeing one either. And I'm just saying that they had to do it and we were convinced that not as.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something I would recommend though, just to avoid lawsuits and things, is to just call the specific plan and take the provincial, Provinciale out of it and say, in what policy land use element that says we, we think this is like Lorax Lake, special area with resource concerns. And anybody that develops this area lends itself to that specific plan, come back and propose a specific plan. And it has to be different than what, you know, Provinciale is. We're not going to recognize that existing entitlement. I have to, we'll have to ask Ryan, our attorney, whether we can do that. But I think we can safely say that the general plan doesn't recognize the, the land use entitlements that were granted under that specific plan. And we've done, and that takes care of that question, so.
The, the, the Cal Poly identified this property along the two parks as a mixed use kind of commercial, mixed use area. What we want to do still.
We can make these mixed use. That makes perfect sense. So what, just, just around this side or?
No, I think it was a box out over here. I don't know what's that view. And it, yes. But I think that they designated that as mixed use to the map.
Well, they only identified, I've got their, their maps. They only identified five acres for mixed use. So I'd rather, kind of, if you heard, I wasn't at those public.
I wasn't either, but I, I read through their stuff and that they have, you know, the models about certain areas that they like to see.
That makes, that makes perfect sense. So we can certainly do that.
See, the problem always is, as for water, you have no water strength and it's hard to develop a town center.
It is, you know, they keep referring to it, to a downtown. And I would, I would love from a zoning standpoint to identify what our downtown is. It starts here and go here and go here. Probably starts here, goes, but where does it drift off or where?
It's a stop sign in Moll.
That's great. But, you know, I, that's something I'm going to need for, you know, the zoning. Because there's policies in the general plan talk about the downtown.
Yeah.
But we don't have it defined downtown, so.
Yeah, it's going to be very general. It's going to be a downtown.
Right.
And right here on this corner.
That's, that's, that's not downtown.
That's part of the design district too, right?
It's British strip.
That's the business district.
Business district, downtown, design district, the, the. It's the same thing.
What's, what's the possibility of making this area a mixed use?
Well, that's what I, we can do that. I'm going to, around here?
Like around the parks, right there?
Oh, it is mixed. We got a U hole.
But right now it's not set as mixed. It's set as commercial separate with low density.
The Shell station has a residence abut.
Across the street, there's a couple of commercial buildings.
Yeah, also.
Yeah, where the.
We could have, we could actually have two forms of mixed use zoning so that one can emphasize commercial, one can emphasize residential. I would think here you want to emphasize more residential and then maybe over around the parks, more commercial. So, you know, that's a really good, good idea. And we can put that kind of a policy in the general plan.
Yes, and where is Moll? This is over this place. Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
If the zoning.
That's where the, uh, the dwellments are behind Sabre.
I think it might be agricultural zoning as well. Let the zoning on that.
Couple of chuckles to long stand, okay?
Art bridge.
Art three. This is.
Well, yeah, because right there, it created floods and they couldn't get.
Maybe we need to do something with that.
Blaming the real estate person.
I mean, it would be, it would be high density residential.
Yes, so the plan is.
First clip, when you get a piece of property, don't you?
Should we designate it high density residential?
Yes.
It is high density.
But we got it down in the general plan, it's office space. I don't know why we did it. It's called, we'll just call it. Is that what, you think high density is a good idea?
Well, this is, this is the.
The creek runs right through. Where does the creek run through there?
Right here.
It kind of comes down.
Right between Sabre Way and, and the, this green area here.
So it kind of comes down a little bit this way.
That's one of the areas that we've talked about, having trails alongside the creek.
Right. Because you can't build there.
We can't build there?
No, it's in a floodway.
It's a floodway, it's not flood.
The whole thing is a floodway?
Most of it. Remember the modified, first, not like.
Yeah. It's in a floodway, flood zone, floodwood.
Or maybe we just leave it in some.
You guys are all in trouble.
Open space isn't a bad way to go right now. Someday we might be able to turn that into a trail alongside the creek there.
There's these parcels along here where the post offices and the data. The map shows that you can have to have, there's a trail along there.
Well, you can show that without, for land use purposes. You can still have high density.
Is there another?
But if it's not practical with land use and high density, then it should either be low density, medium density, or as it is. So I don't, I don't see high density for that.
I'll let you sit down, Julie. You have more room over there?
Well, we just need a low density residential.
All these, in here, a hundred foot lots. They're all about 5,000 square feet and that's it. And there's a lot of them.
Some of them are 25 by 100. Some of them are about 25 by 100.
I think most of those are across the highway.
There's a lot of them.
This area here.
There's definitely quite a few of the tree streets because I, I see them right across the street from the.
Yeah, right here, this area right here, almost all of those are 25 by 100 foot lots. The ones that are behind, north of Arrowhead here.
I know there's one lot there, the, on Second Street. It looks to be like a 20 by 20 foot lot. Couple of kids, put a little motorhome and a nice little shed there and, yeah.
Anything else you guys see?
No, but the, the tram net over there.
Don't bring it up.
A little bit of clarity to that. Yeah, maybe put it, you know. Yeah.
You've got just enough, Gary, to give you.
Well, yeah, I've got some good, I guess fundamentally, do we, do we create a medium density land use designation? Or do we just kind of leave it the way that we have it?
Well, you were talking about changing rural to very low. Is it possible to just use low, low, medium and high?
Yeah.
Right, instead of four, instead of three, designation to four?
Yeah, we're there.
And I do have a question based on what Dennis Darling was saying. When this comes back again to the planning commission and to the council, is it possible to see what the public did, say, during the workshop? And then see what it is that we're designating as what's going to happen to the general plan to see if there's. I mean, it can be exactly, it doesn't always fall right.
I don't know because I wasn't in those meetings.
Do we have that information?
It's pretty much all in that, it's in those documents and it tells pretty clearly what they want to see. And so from that, I was able to kind of decipher what I thought worked out best. But I, in terms of, you know, identifying the Auburn Canyon, the avenues, you know, we take their maps and applied some of the principles to these, this map. Basically did, but it's, I don't know how, let's say not, we can't do that. But I'm just, I'm trying to think of the best way to do that, so.
How, how did all the public input get collated from Cal Poly? Like how did they, do they have a document of all the public input? Do they have a, a report of the public input?
The reports, the reports in the general plan. It's a background report. It's all in there.
It was all the workshops. They did, they did do the maps and ideally all of it's supposed to be incorporated into the.
Because I know we did sticky notes, so it's not exactly a way to report.
The part, one part I really don't like about the general plan is that it's hard to get through it because they have spent half the document about the public participation process. And so by the time you get into the meet, you're, you're tired, you just want to go away from it. So my, in terms of reformatting, I want to take and just summarize, you know, what happened to the public participation programs and create a separate chapter in the background report to refer to it. And, and all the details and the public information's there. And focus on the preferred alternative. And so when you get, when you open the document, the first thing you read is, oh, a paragraph about public participation. There's a lot done. And then here's the preferred alternative. Here's the preferred alternative. If you want to look at the other ones, you can go back to the document, look at this. Then you get into the meat of the document. And so you, in one city, you can get through and have a good understanding of what the city wants in terms of their future vision. The way it is now, I, it's taken me, you know, six months just to try to figure out what they're trying to say. So that's the person that does this every day. So I tried to condense it down to some very basic things here. And it's certainly better than the 83 plan, which I don't even think has land use. And in terms of implementation, I think they did an implement, they have a mixed use zone, but there's absolutely no mixed use on the zoning map. So the emphasis here is, you know, trying to follow their view of the public's desires, which I think we have, and then focus our energies on the zoning. And look at that in terms of implementation. You know, and we need to kick this around some more. But I'd like to get, you know, confirmation, this looks pretty good. This is where we want to go. And I heard, I think I heard the commission tell me, Provinciale not a really good idea, but maybe we could make a specific plan here and have some policies in there, resource protection oriented. You know, have to look at stuff. It's got to mitigate their impacts and generate some kind of a land use pattern of some kind of low density residential for the purposes of identifying traffic.
You guys can stand over here where you can see.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's actually a different map. So that's what they were talking about. It was the, the initial consultant that did that and that we made changes for this.
Yeah, we can certainly bring that map over and kind of get it, take a look at that and then go, okay, that's what they're bringing out.
So I think that's a little clarity on Provinciale, what, what we don't want Provinciale to go around here?
I kind of heard that from.
I think Provinciale is, is one of those, it's, it's a pipe dream.
It's 20 years down the road because we don't have the resources to get out that far.
And, and this, this goes to 2040, I bet it's not started by then.
Is it, is there any part, does it include, does it change that area?
Yeah.
But there's nothing out there.
There's nothing out there. I don't know if there is, is there?
No. I don't know if this, if the utility sound of that gate.
It was Lower Lake, Lower Lake serves some.
They're doing a new water line down Dam Road to one of the.
That's Kanaka.
The trailer park.
It's Kanaka, right?
There, yeah. And, and that's as far. There, yeah, and that's as far as the water goes there. So it's well systems from there on, but I can know about PG&E utilities.
Well, that's your 90s.
All within the
The district's at bounds.
The background report would have that, but I believe it is in there. They'd have to amend the district boundaries to do that.
Well, there's so much cost involved with this project. The utilities and everything, but the roads, there's no roads in and out of there. Basically doing roads from scratch. There's got to be two, so you've got an escape route.
Well, they, that was all part of that project, I mean, that was, they were going to do that.
That's why they bought those properties, so they abandoned them.
Yeah, he's been developing
Before they funded it, it cost money.
He's been developing everything from the dam gate all the way to Lake Street Bridge, and then the tie-in over at 6th Street. That was all within his scope.
Yeah, sure.
And that was in the
A lot of those here.
That was all going to be done before anything else.
No, I think that's good.
I guess my question, maybe if it is a specific plan, what does that entail? It was something specific, I guess.
I just don't want to, I would want to say, if we don't want to do that, this property, this property, like Golden Hills, like, great. This is going to be a project with a golf course with higher homes, you don't want to exclude that, you want to keep that.
But we're not getting rid of the property, it's just how, how are we going to zone it?
What it started, sorry.
Go ahead.
What it started as, in the resolution for the EIR, it was the job now is managed development, resource protection, and managing. And it's going to be 720, single family unit, 720.
But that was in 2007, and it changed from there in 2009.
This is the, yes.
Is that the nine?
This is the last one that I find, and that I have to be careful with. Everything, just, it was
It would be an impossible, it would be really difficult.
Yeah.
I mean, by the end of the day, they couldn't afford to do it.
Like Carl said, if it gets started by 2040, it, you know, it's a pipe dream.
But for the purposes of assessing this property, what do we want to do with it?
You don't.
What?
Because I don't know if
You can say it if you have it in 2040, you don't know that.
It could still be zoned.
If something happens on the airport property, if we get somebody coming there and builds that out, that could very well go.
It could still be zoned for building out there, low density or resource protection, whatever. And the property's still available for that, but I don't think it's something we're going to have to worry about an EIR on during our tenure.
I guess the question is, is if we leave it alone, we could still apply the numbers for that project for the purpose of traffic. That'd be a worst case scenario, and when, you know, when they decide to go forward with it, they're going to have to mitigate the impacts. I don't know how they're going to do that. The other option is to just say, we recognize that this is, we don't recognize that project.
Well, I don't think we don't want to do that, I think what the property is, we don't know yet exactly where it stands, and that's I mean, is there a development agreement?
There is no development agreement. So it's a specific plan.
We don't know if there's
A specific plan, but that's it.
So what was the big issue when the general plan was being done at one point? This project came up?
At the end, they didn't think about it.
And said we needed to implement it, so why implement it if there was never an agreement?
Because the city approved it as a specific plan.
But no agreement was ever signed for it personally.
But we essentially approved entitlement for that many, those many units. So if we're going to, if we're going to say no to it, we have to basically take the problem somehow. But my recommendation would just leave it alone and have some policies in the general plan to say, if you're going to build this, it's going to be, it needs to fully mitigate impacts. And I don't know how they're going to do it. Or, you know, redo the specific plan. Because otherwise, we're probably going to get attorneys challenging us.
Yeah, that's, we want to fight that, we don't
Well, we will, if we do something different than what's there. So I'm almost guaranteed we'll get something.
Yeah, I think we protect the city and protect the, what we want to see out there by just keeping it in, analyzing it, and then putting in policies that would restrict what they can do.
Making sure that that it's being done correctly.
Exactly. That they're mitigating everything, that they're putting in all their infrastructure, that the city is protected.
Because we don't want this sprawl, and that was one of the terms that was used with all of the housing and stuff.
Well, and that's why the Sierra Plan doesn't want it.
Right.
But I think for the future of the city, you need some new development, and that's the prime place.
It is, it is. If it develops soon right now, we can just feed back on existing EIR and just pop.
But that's why we need to have stuff in the general plan to protect us.
We need to have policies in the general plan so that it's not just a matter of popping it. We need to do a new EIR, because conditions have changed. We have a new general plan, their specific plan may not be totally consistent with that. So, you know, we'll put in some policies that are much more stringent. And so they're going to have to rethink the whole thing.
And what I've been told is that the property is for sale. They're not going forward with what they have planned, so they're
Yeah, but if we just took that and go, okay, well, we no longer recognize that, and the property is for sale, we're going to So is that okay, let's leave it, and then we'll put some policies in there?
Yeah.
And what if, I hate that part, but we've gotten this taken care of, medium, low, and high. That takes care of it. So
I'd like to see the map with those changes to see what, how that all entails, how that all entails the place.
Well, you're basically looking at it.
Basically, the dark or medium green would be the low.
Yeah.
The yellow green would be the medium.
Yeah.
And then the purple or whatever blue would be the high, just like you did.
Basically it. Yes, we're going to make that purple, we're going to make this medium, we're going to make this high.
So the minimum lot size is going to change, are those bigger lot sizes?
The lot sizes are going to be implemented by the zone. We're not going to worry about that.
Hey Gary, if I could just suggest maybe the low should be the lightest color? And the usual should be a little darker, and the high should be the darkest, just, yeah, just easier to visualize it.
I don't feel like working out three shades of green and
Yeah.
I already found out that my browns aren't good.
Your browns aren't good?
Yeah, I
You've got to be careful with that.
I got confused.
The only difference, other changes are, we're going to take this open space and create low density. We're going to take this parcel here
Turn it into residential.
Residential low density. We're going to, I'm going to look at that mobile home thing and see how inconsistent, we may want to make that high density or something. We're going to take that out, make that residential.
And we did talk about mixed use.
Yeah, we're going to do mixed use surrounding these two parts.
Yeah. And the mixed use, I see your line going around the school, you want to stop right at the end of the park, right?
Then probably the zoning code will have, and I'll reference it in the, in the land use element, that will probably have two categories of commercial, mixed use, one will be, emphasizes commercial, one will be, emphasizes residential. So we'll have
Yeah. Mixed use, commercial, mixed use.
Two levels of mixed use. Is this the village area?
Yes. No.
This is the village area.
Yeah.
Highland Harbor.
This is Highland Harbor here.
Coming down Highland Harbor right there, coming in.
There's actually apartments over here.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are the apartments.
Over here. But there's residential over here, too.
And there's open space.
There's that state park right there.
Is that like their play area or something, or?
Building space right behind the
Thanks for bringing that up.
Come on, guys, anything?
You're talking crossroads?
Talking about somewhere here.
Is that where that five story hotel's going to go?
Right there, in the middle of the village?
Five story.
Yeah, four or five stories.
Yeah, right behind it.
Yes, right behind the school.
The Meadow Brook area.
Yeah.
I thought that was owned by the Canuck die, not the county.
We're talking about this parcel?
Of course, I know.
Because we got a letter complaining about Canuck die and their flooding issue into residential areas behind the Meadow Brook preschool.
Julie, what is that?
It doesn't really matter, I guess who calls it.
That's behind, that's behind that, the school, what do they call that school when the kids are back?
Oh, the continuation school?
Yes. That's ruined all the law.
He went there, he went there.
That's right behind it, and it's
It's my threat to my kids at all times. I want to say it looks like
By the yard? By the yard.
Yeah, it's right across.
Yeah, the cross one.
Right in there?
So we got 53, that's old there.
Yeah, it's right here.
Yeah, right after the apartment, so there should be a residential since that's a school.
Is that this thing right there? Is this this way here?
Yeah.
This area right here?
Yeah.
What is that?
Oh, no, that's the detention block for the apartment complex.
Nice, so what's next to it?
This building right there. This building right here is the continuation school.
Go west, go west.
That should be, we should just leave that alone. Just call it high density or low density.
Where's the state park coming in, in that area?
Oh, it's over by Old Highway 53, right at that turn where The Land Resort is at.
Starts at Lakeview.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That's what I was thinking, well, there's the state park.
Good call.
State Park, right.
More eyes to get on this.
Go down Lakeview, go down the church. If you take a right turn, I can't remember the turn, the road part of the church, that whole little It's just a little slipper, goes right up to Old Temple Street.
Anything else that jumps out at you before we start the travel circulation? Circulation's a little on the phone.
Oh, I'm glad.
I got dug inside.
You get a good education.
What's, just a, what is that street that is stuck right up to, onto, onto 53, but it's not connected, is that Central?
That's 53.
Is it this?
It's true. Warner, are you talking about down here, off of the highway, or?
No, the other side.
Cash Creek?
Cash Creek Way?
Yeah, it's by the school, where's the school? It's this one, that's not connected to the
That's looking there, Meadow Brook there. 10K, you mean?
Yeah, this one, right here.
Yeah, there's Yuba College right there, there's Canuck die Education, NFC Courthouse, and AODS.
Sorry, that's South Center Drive.
And the Amroad Extension. Goes from Walmart intersection down to the street, all the way down to the ends, the Amroad Extension enters in the
South Center.
I wonder why that was never connected, because it's that grade.
We're going to work on it.
Working on it.
That's my original tie-in.
Yeah.
Can they go all the way up to
Left and left, right in, right out?
Goes. Goes behind, you go straight, go in behind the school, wrap around Oak Hill, and back around, have a guess.
Isn't that the area that the PA is looking at?
Yeah, yes.
Or is that, is what we have zoned here?
Eight, Anthony.
That's county.
That's in the city, that's county.
The county donated the property, where's going to donate the property?
There's Lake Shore.
Who's like, to me?
It's right there.
So this is Walmart, right there.
Yeah, there's Walmart. So this is 18 here, so
And that's commercial right now.
Yeah, and I think it's actually zoned right now, PA, professional administrator. Because that's where the health clinic is at, the health clinic.
Where does the PA want to go?
It's at the right Phillips.
Right up here.
And the PA would be like an institution, you're simply subject to use permit.
Like, right down here. So 18
I was just thinking, if PA comes in, what, what's the process? And so it will be, we'll designate it a medium and then they have to come in with a use permit to, in order to build a facility.
Yeah, it's an institution use here. If it's commercial, if it's an institution use here.
But it's now zoned, it's now zoned, then. What is it, what is it zoned?
It's zoned PA right now, professional administrative offices.
And we can do that, again, we can create a professional office zone if you want, right? And apply it to a commercial land use designation.
We have the flexibility on this, anyone, right? Yes, that's all.
And when we get into zoning, will we add language for this?
Yes, yeah, just
Well, this is great, this is exactly what I wanted.
Is it possible to put some major roads on there, Gary?
Yeah, oh, yeah, we have the ability to put all the roads on here.
No, all of us do cluttered major roads.
Arterials. Is this Is this the liquor store?
Yes, that's that.
Why is there three separate locations for commercial? In my mind, I'm seeing only one, is that just an empty lot and it's designated
Yeah, and then there was a church that was proposed, we go in across the street from the church, just north of, west of that. Right here on the slot, right here. I don't know how that got all zoned commercial there, but
Yeah, I'm wondering that.
Because even a church can go under an online zone. Yeah, I'm just wondering where that happened. There we go again.
That's 18.
Yeah, that's kind of
Yeah, high density. I don't know how that got there either. These are professional administrators, these are doctors, the doctor's offices down there. I'm not sure what that I think if you looked at this too, there were a couple of
And if you could circle these two, because that one is the liquor store. The little square one.
And I believe these are C1.
Is this it? Yeah, there's C1 over here.
It was a weird zone.
So those spots
It wasn't C2, right here.
Those spots are there, really?
Yeah.
So just apply the zone to the general plan.
Here?
Yeah, are those
We can sort of change it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it seems like there's a neighborhood, commercial area serving
Yeah.
Neighborhood commercial. And I guess that would be nice, not all four corners, but there's already residential.
These aren't a house, but we could do that.
Maybe put a mix
No, and this is zoned industrial, the only thing I can give here is this is
This is, this is
Works, works.
Down there, not for
Yeah. Taking a burn in. So
But those other people
I don't know why
I'm going to stay with it.
I guess the
It's nine, looks like they're Yeah, we're looking at that one.
This one may be zoned commercial.
That's where the thought process
That probably would have been, oh.
This is zoned industrial, according to this.
Where, where, that little red dot?
Yeah, I don't know why that would be industrial, though, it's the
Isn't that the mobile home? No, that's, that's just a acre or so, it's zoned by an association.
Oh, 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 that could be why one of these are That makes sense, because we own one of those, the Park Woods area.
And this is the swimming pool area on like 10th Street, 11th Streets.
Didn't somebody buy that?
No, associations don't
Yeah, still association.
Hey Gary, just have a, yeah, I'm finding
Yeah.
There are a lot of like individual things, wouldn't we just
Hey, Gary, just have a, you know, find a, yeah, a lot of like individual things, wouldn't we just, from a general plan perspective? We're gonna call this all, you know, this color extended into...
The reason we put those spots in is we wanted to make sure that, you know, someone's gonna do an investment on there, and the zoning's gonna reflect that, it needs to be consistent with just like, we want to take those things out when we can. But, um, we did kind of a spot by spot, look at some of those, and felt that, for the most part, we did that, you know, the spots where we, we saw that there was actual commercial activity, we left them in. Right, right here, you know, that serves the neighborhood, and right here, and these little spots, we left them in there, because, because from, from, you know, still working with people in this community and trying to come up with.
Well, I guess that's kind of the, for the planning commission to say, I mean, you want to keep these things going on, I, I don't know what that is. Would we just want to call that something that we're gonna grandfather in, but we're gonna change the overall...
Is that somebody that's already got a business or an investment in that piece of property?
Well, if you grant water, yes, no. But you, would you want that, uh, business to expand in that location?
In the middle of a residential zone?
Probably not, because you're talking about a high-density residential area.
And we have the same thing going on near Vallejo, Armiho, there's C4 mixed in with residential, and we have somebody who put a workshop right in the middle of the residential area, I wouldn't want them next to it.
So we take, we've taken that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've taken that out. But there are spots where we've, we kind of did a evaluation, and we felt like we should leave those in, and we can go back and look at those again.
Red?
It looks like a couple to me.
It's industrial.
Why don't we do have one spot on that street?
Little tiny purple spot?
Yeah, let's take that out, what is that?
I don't know. Sign up, we can't take a hit. Oh, you know what it is, it's, it's Robert Reed's property. It's Robert Reed's property.
Which one is that?
This is damn red, and this is that little road that goes up there, that's Bob Reed's property.
The guy's lodge, near that?
I don't think so, no, I, this is his...
No, because lodge is on Lake Street.
The tracking company.
Yeah, that's where he buried it.
Do you want to, do you want to keep the tracking business there?
He's buried, isn't he, back of?
Or do you want to make that residential, make that non-performing? I think we have to put a non-performing residential in that location.
He is non-performing, he was even shutting down pretty much anyways.
Yeah.
He's not gonna be doing much. Can you make that residential?
Yeah, we can do that.
Getting unburied, back of.
I don't know what happened.
Well, the problem was he took a fly, his business across the...
It's gone, it's gone. It is completely third now.
So I have a question here, because I'm looking at, uh, 36, where we own property which looks to me, obviously it needs to be approved by a bunch of others, like a great potential area for a park, and I'm seeing our park here is designated as open land, and there's absolutely no open land areas designated in any of the avenues. And on 36, we own almost that entire block, where can we make it, I don't know if there's mixed open space residential, uh, but it seems like we're not giving any opportunity for parks, for open land in the avenues, uh, or anything other, uh, else, uh, in the parks area as well, which does...
Is there an area where we can actually identify that could be a good...
Yeah, it's identified on one of our maps.
Where we own, we identify, yeah.
That's not a big spot for a park over there.
I know, it's a flood zone, I know, but close to the park during the winter.
But where, where is it, Gary?
Oh, yeah.
36th Avenue, uh, so this is 40th, I believe.
It's been golden.
Am I correct in thinking this is 40th?
Yes.
So 39, 38, 37, 36, this area right here.
On the west side of Phillips.
Yeah.
Well, what we can do is we can, you don't have to, I, I actually wanted, asked our GIS person to do property by property, because it, you can do blobs with, with, uh, general plans, and say, generally, we want a park over here. Leave it alone.
Well, tough.
Yeah.
But I want to, I want to nail this down.
Yeah, I did a ride along with a retired, a little stranger, Jim, and there were some spots, yeah, the city owns, and there's, there aren't any parks out there.
A lot of them are only 50 by 100-foot lots, but might be a park on 80, might be a park down there, that's, uh, this is...
That's a good place for a park.
It's past his bedtime.
The problem is, there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood, that's great. No, I think we need to designate that. By the way, just, the city owns a bunch of parcels, it seems kind of all over.
And there's, there's four or five in that area altogether, that's why...
Is there surrounding owners, same entities or something, or is somebody looking at that?
The Canucktide water is right here on 35th.
I mean, there are a bunch of empty parts.
But the rest is all residential.
You know, the 50 by 100-foot, they're asking about the property owners that are adjacent to that park.
Could you start trading in all that?
No, because right here on 36, I own probably 250 by 100. He's currently researching all that. Make, make, almost the entire land. Plus 100, you see on... So we probably figure out, we've got a strategy.
Place to stroll.
Have a lot of money to, to do what, like, to, potentially to put in some housing that we can then sell, sell or rent. City is gonna be in the rental business?
Uh, I don't think that's...
We already are, truly.
Well, yeah, you are.
For a dollar a year. Residential? No, I don't think so.
Oh, yeah, I can see your department has...
We have rents at a low, I probably kind of don't do it, you know, you owe the people money more.
Right, no, I just can't. Properties need maintenance.
So, uh, what's it gonna be, guys, are we gonna go park here?
Yeah.
I, I would like to see something designated for open space in such a large residential area.
Public use area, whether it be a park or some sort of other designation for the public use area.
And put it around whatever the city owns, alright.
Well, they were kicking around looking for the VA clinic, or the VA housing.
Because it's part of, the proposition allows for that.
I mean, we can leave it, we can leave residential and identify a little spot, future potential park area.
I think that would be good.
And if it happens, great, the city comes up with some...
Policy that you could just put in?
Well, it'd be good to identify on the land use map, but yeah, we could, we could say, yeah, and we would implement it with our policy, on land use map, it would say, in the avenues, we want to have, um, a park somewhere. And generally, it could be in this area.
Look at the park, the map is right there, that would make sense.
But I'm not seeing a little green square where...
Guess we shouldn't just see, plant a...
The park system.
I mean, there's, with, with the residential, you could look far here, the city just go in.
It's 27, 28, that's the area, 22. And, uh...
Ice fishing.
Ice fishing.
Okay, uh, anything else before we move on to the next, uh, item?
Yes.
That's, that's, I'm sorry, guys, but I really appreciate you guys saying, this is our...
Okay, all right, thanks for coming.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, great, all right, good seeing you.
All right, thank you, guys, thanks for coming, thank you very much.
Julie, we'll be giving you the calls.
Okay, sounds good, bye, guys.
Bye.
What's your guys name? Okay, there's gonna be, there's street three sheets, basically, we have the main circulation plan, and that shows, and basically, the arterials, the local streets, collectors, Doug's gonna talk a little bit more about, you know, where he's thinking makes sense. Um, there's a provision that allows us to designate truck routes, uh, we don't have that now, so I was thinking we might want to identify a location, just allow trucks and keep the trucks out of certain areas. Um, so we have a map that shows designated truck routes, we have a map that shows, right now, I think 53 is considered a freeway through a part of our town. Expressway. No, freeway, so the idea is to put, um, to put, um, interchanges, and to me, that's ludicrous, and, um, in Williams, they did the same thing, where Highway 20 goes over 5, and they call that a freeway, we had to re, I worked with them to redesign it to an expressway, because they'll never get the traffic. And it's, it's, you, you know how much it costs to build an interchange for low-hauling highway? So I, I would say we would make this an expressway in the general plan, and, um, talk to Caltrans about changes.
What, what does that change with the fact that Caltrans is planning on making, uh, from Highway 20 to 29 in Upper Lake, down to 53 be the main thoroughfare, they're trying to make that a four-lane highway from 20 all the way to 53? Uh, but I mean, the amount of extra traffic that they plan on sending in our direction, which we want to take advantage of.
Yeah.
Um, what does that do for future changes, since this is looking at 2040 plan?
Well, I can tell you that their staff is supportive of changes.
What does that mean, is it, it, uh, null signalized intersection?
No, you have signalized, in fact, we were talking about maybe doing some roundabouts, and... No interchanges. Yeah, but no interchanges, we have bridges going over, you know, onramps and offramps, and, you know, I...
I don't know if that's gonna be able to happen, because with the development of the airport property, they're, they're proposing doing a bike overpass.
They can do an overpass and still have, have a highway, not call it freeway.
Who, who's doing an overpass?
If you could do a roundabout there, I mean, it'd be a lot better. What's that, where are you looking?
He's gonna get the plans. If, if, if you don't mind, I don't know if it fits in here or not, but I know, uh, I'm kind of backing up, so I really apologize, uh, you said noise element at one point, and we were talking, now we're talking highway. Um, it's just an idea that popped up in my head, because we see a lot of residential, uh, areas when we're driving Highway 53, some on which we couldn't see, I'm wondering what the possibility is, I don't know if it needs to be in our plan, for like a sound wall, so that we can put that barrier between us, I don't have to see that pop growing in that guy's house, so that we have that...
That has to do with noise contours. Once we get the noise contours, you know, then we can figure out whether it's severe enough to justify putting law. They put some sound walls up in Nevada County, when they do it, but they basically had, they were doing the major widening of the highway.
Yeah.
So it really took a lot to get them to put the sound walls up, they were really noisy, so you're right, there might be places where we want to put sound walls up, and our noise consultant will be able to advise us this time. They put one on 53. But it's probably not for view purposes, it's probably...
It depends what, if you're right, you know, if you're up or below, or...
Okay, here's Douggy and his...
Okay, Doug, take it away, man.
These are some, these are some proposals we've put together, this is with the development of our, our property over here.
Well, that's a big, that's a big project, that's because you have a lot of...
If this goes, this is, one of these projects is gonna go, one of these options is gonna happen.
And who's, who's in charge of that option, that Caltrans or that...
What is, what is this?
That's damn road extension.
That's damn road going through the middle of the ballpark, what? Oh, they have to have a distance, huh? They have to have a distance from the freeway.
Easy access to McDonald's.
Roundabout right there.
We are, that's another option.
One of just a roundabout here and a roundabout here? Yeah, I think, I think that would be too, 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 it has to have a certain... Yeah, it is, we're gonna be trucky though, we have those roundabouts, they're really sweet.
The first roundabout.
So these are all the damn embosses, riverside down, across, twenty years ago.
Oh, wow, look at that, those overpass.
Caltrans, you know, a few of you, those.
Caltrans already looked at these, they're part of this process with me and Bob.
It's got projects before.
I was wondering about pedestrian, in the past, they're...
Oh, it's gonna be, the Williams. But you're, we've, we've got so much congestion here in this, this area right now.
I wonder why there's doubts, is that we're, we're okay with taking that, not a free, because I talked to both of those guys.
Well, I think the major congestion, especially right now, is the...
Based on that other map that I have, uh, that was, that came out when they were gonna make 29, they were gonna do the improvements on 29, going over the hill to Napa, they're gonna open up little holes in the mountain, and I think that, that can happen.
I mean, we could still, we could still designate this as a highway, that's true.
Certainly, and the airport.
We can still do this, right?
It's state route.
Yeah, state routes, we can do whatever we want with a general plan, the idea is to try to create more of a consistent thing, not half the...
When it comes to the damn road area right now, when you come off Old Highway 53 towards Walmart, the issue is the stop sign, not the, uh, highway itself, from my personal experience. You mean the U? Uh, yeah, right at that stop sign, to me, is where the congestion is, where I'd like to see the round point, if we do, uh, any changes, I would be looking to make changes on that end, for the entryway to the shopping center, to alleviate, because there's already two...
You're talking about this area right at the entryway?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've asked them to do some work on that, they're, they're working on that, they want something more than what they've got, that's a bottleneck. Problem is, that the way that Walmart is designed, uh, Walmart is designed, you, they've, they've designed it so that the main truck has to come through here.
I don't like that.
And I don't like it, but that's, it's already designed up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you can't, you can't, you can't seal up the driveways, you could do that, but I'm thinking... Their new plan chosen, going around.
Right.
Yeah, but they're, they're talking about coming in through that.
Well, I'll tell you right now, this, this intersection here in the morning is a flipping joke, absolutely, between the school, and the court, and Walmart, and Amberger Hill right there.
This is designated as a highway, can you still have right, right off of that?
There's a song.
People going to court, they drive right through the steps.
This is reasonable.
Tell which one they got to court.
Even the OI may have PTSD stuff.
Yeah.
The people go to school rocking.
The, the RPS officers arrested a grandma.
You can do a right on front.
Well, that's, that's one of the options we're looking at this, this, not in this...
Maybe she was screaming another word, but the camera's still on.
You know what, let's, let's pull this off here, because we're not talking about this at the general plan.
Edit that part out, please, Elizabeth.
This could pay for my issue.
Oh, yeah, still got a lot more to go over.
Yeah, but anyway, um...
Thanks, Doug.
I have a five o'clock flight out of Sacramento, but you know, I... So, this circulation, man, it's a start, we have a Highway 53 corridor study, it basically took all the local resources I could find and applied these, so there's just, you know, stuff that, that the local area came up with, that the Cal Poly folks didn't even think about. Um, so, you know, I thought it was important to identify some of these things, um, this is something that we need to be looking at carefully. If you make this, or this, then this...
Allegiate?
It could. Yeah, it could, I mean, I think that's something we need to think about, Doug?
Doug? I'm rare.
So Doug came up with, this is basically the point. And so, yeah, he's got it, he's got it, he's got it down, and we're gonna, you know, I put those...
Is this hard to make that a, a collector's street?
Or is?
It is, but it's...
But it's not.
Conform to any, any staff.
It's grandfathered in.
So what's your question?
My question is, is this... Will they be able to handle tra, the amount of traffic? On Phillips?
It will come about June, July.
Are we doing all of Phillips, all the way to 40th?
Yes. 18th, 18th to 40th is getting rebuilt, four feet wide, wider in size, 18th is getting rebuilt from wheels all the way down to 3. That's your ATP grant with line board, CBG grant.
We did it.
Done. He assigned some documents there, gonna get some money released.
We got the environmental done today, it's pretty neat. Good job. The other question, why is this little piece in here not connected to all the... Well, he said that's a gully, you can't even get through, so I don't even know.
We know that, we've been...
Yeah, we tried, that's the place where the guy was in the van, Joe.
That's what he said.
So we need to take out a...
Yes, this whole drainage right here is drainage, just drainage goes through here, this is county sewer, that's where you see the manhole covers, or the middle.
So I'm gonna delete that, and then there's these other ones that we talked about earlier.
Yeah, we can leave these, but some of these are just paper streets, uh, they're overrun with trees and brush, they're just roads that were never developed. Yeah, we can leave these pensilin. These are just paper streets. They're overrun with trees and brush. They're just roads that were never developed. What is that connecting on that large street avenue extension of the, up to the right, even on Walmart? What is that connecting those two streets? That goes from basically the corporation yard to, actually goes all the way down, and that's where, this is the route we took for the, the sewer main, the force main. That's all, that's where that force mains.
So will this improve, it will improve the circulation through the city to avoid the highways, I suppose. Is it something we want to have? That's the question.
Not there.
On, on traffic line?
None of traffic, take these out.
It's just residential.
Well, if you leave them in, does that help you get brownies or anything?
You can leave in, just the probability of me doing that in my career, the next guy, I don't know.
It's one thing to leave it in here, and something else to actually apply for.
Right.
Be able to use it.
Believe me, isn't that, maybe you can explain this map a little bit?
So basically, what's on here, drive that line, there's an island here. Lake Shore, Lake Shore Drive and Olympic, those are minor arterials. So you got other streets like Old 53, you got Segments, Old 53, Burns Valley, those are your major collectors. Those carry a lot of traffic to your arterials to get to your downtown corridor. So you want to leave those the same.
Second street carrying a lot of traffic.
Second street doesn't. Explain what you mean the same, like, we can identify them as arterial or not?
Sure, like the existing.
There. It's not, it's not based on number of, uh, uh, traffic. For now, if, if later on, if we have a future build out, we'd have to do another study, and we can change it. We have to do, change it.
We're gonna leave this out for our, for our, for our only means to look at, and if they see something wrong with it, they'll let us know. Because they're gonna do a cumulative.
Based on my, based on my map, map what I have, that's what's identified in this. This is 2015. This is, this needs to be updated in this document as well. So we want to stay consistent with what we have here.
Sure.
We'd spend a lot of money on getting this developed.
I'm not arguing with you.
And so Arrow, or white arrow. An arrowhead is a collector? Yes. And the only arterials we have is Olympic and Lake Shore. And Old 53. And Old 53. And so 40th, 15th, those are all collectors as well. This is what we can go by. This is, this is what's in that plan right there.
So basically, just make a plan, a map, that shows it that there's circulation on it. They recognize it.
So one of the major changes is the new terminology.
Yeah.
Going back to a, a minor, minor arterial and a major collector. You missed the crowds again, right?
You are, yeah.
I'm not, from far away, it's all black. Oh, gotcha, gotcha. So we have no major arterials. Your major arterial would be SR 53.
Nope, don't run from this now.
One man party.
Which they're just stating as your interstate part. No, I'm just using that as a principal arterial. They've got lots of different names, one. But that, that would, that's a tough one. That would be your major arterial, what it is, coming off.
But that's why I think in our general plan, we're gonna have a map for truck routes. We're gonna have a map for the, the streets. We're gonna have a map for the bikes. We'll have a map.
When you do your map, do you not put?
We want to do trails. We may not be wanting to do trails.
Could you not put a blackout line on your roads? Because just a yellow road would have been a whole lot more easier to see than just a.
Just because you're colorblind, bro.
Can you tell purple, orange, brown? Yeah, I actually can. I'm blind. It could be easier. Or maybe a thicker line for a road?
Avoid yellow colors.
Yeah, well, you see.
Yellow was actually the easiest to see. I'm sorry I used that as a big example. When you have orange and brown, and two light lines on the side. One other thing I want to point out is we want to stay consistent with our arterials and our collectors and our, our major collectors and our collector streets, because that's how I give the money. You take them out, then we're, we're just cutting out roads.
Well, what he wanted to do is, we call them collectors.
Yeah, because you can't put money into residential, right?
That's how we're gonna pave our roads.
Exactly. So I, but I mean, we're not changing anything as far, we're not adding any collectors. We're not, uh. It's all in the map now.
So the big question for you guys is, is there anything else? Is there anything else that you want to do to this? Want to add some more extensions?
What we'll do.
This is your community.
Your, uh, our original tie-in off 18th to, for your Phillips extension, that's gonna be a major collector. That's just one there.
You have that here?
I don't know what you have. Do you have it? Do you have it there?
Did you put that in here?
Not yet.
Let's put it in here. Oh, I'll put it in here. You want to make this a major collection?
And, and when you say that, you mean all the way down Phillips as well?
On the map.
Phillips over.
All the way where?
I don't see that on that map. Phillips all the way to Davis. I can't feel on your map.
Right here.
Yeah, the last one.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, we're trying to.
Unless you got a yellow on this one.
Oh, yeah, they put a yellow on yellow. It's gonna really be bad. Uh, sorry to ask the question, but it says it's a collector. Here it says major collector, but I'm not seeing, it is a major collector.
Isn't this, you know, like this?
That is, but I didn't see Phillips as a major collector. Why is this one a major collector?
This one too. This. This. And that, right?
Well, I'm gonna be following this map. This is the only one, this is the only skip out.
And this, oh, you continue on this too, right?
Yeah, that goes all the way up.
So this is now also a major collector.
That's where you identify it. That's where you identify it. That's where you have it. And, and Boils is not a major collector? Boils is a collector too. Okay, I don't see that on her map.
This one?
That's.
This, this one too?
Yeah.
This one?
According to what Doug just said, yes.
Boils is major?
I was doing just fine until he starts marking up.
Yes. Looking better.
Did I do it right?
Here's the.
Couldn't we also say that Austin is a collector? All the Browns are major collectors. Everything's a major collector.
So this one.
So we're, we only got two distinctions here.
So we have this, this, we don't have this.
You started to have that.
That's 32nd.
Yeah.
I don't know where it's at here. It's one of those that extends all the way out to the highway.
I put it away.
Just don't, don't mess with this man.
I have one of these two, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm not sure which one it is, so.
Ah, 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 don't draw on that map.
I, I want to go. Maybe the only one who makes this.
Put the marker down and step away from the map. Get back away from the day somewhere there.
I know it is for Barry. I have a, a question about a collector. Can't Austin Road be seen as a collector? Since it, uh, is kind of splicing right through two major residential areas?
At a school?
And I'm just, if we can get money to fund that road to make it a, a nice road consistently. Austin is a collector. Oh, is it? Oh, it's not. Not on here. That's why he's gonna take this map.
Get it back to Doug and he can mark it up.
Early plans was that Austin and Olympic would be each one-way opposite directions.
So hey, one suggestion I'd make is, uh, make Austin, Austin all the way through. Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's a division. And Austin Road or something.
When I give people directions. The roadblock changes at Sonoma.
See, it's a division right here? Yes, it does. It's one block over.
And then Santa Claris, that little dirt road.
Is there an extension that we have to add to it?
They go in both directions.
I don't believe so.
There's no, there's not one of these deals. We don't have, we're not talking about anymore.
It doesn't go all the way to 53 or just stop at Old 53?
Stop at Old 53, then it becomes a different street. Yeah.
No, it says Austin still.
Yeah, Austin goes from Lake Shore to Old 53. That's your major collector.
Division is that one little block right there next to Main Street, right?
And I thought, am I incorrect in believing that Pomo is also a collector? Because when I talked with Phil Dow, when we were looking at doing a one-way on Pomo, school buses use that, a bunch of parents use that to bring their kids to school.
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
So you don't have to ride all the way there.
Yeah, yeah, you don't have to ride all the way. You barely got Tim. No, yeah, you got, it's a 16-foot average.
Okay. We got bicycles? We beat that again. Plus you have bicycle plan. So this team up with a recent bicycle plan.
The good things about the bicycle plans is there's a lot of grant money for bicycles.
Yes. Well, we got the ATP grant.
So we're looking at Austin Road. According to our, our biking head plan, we're pretty complete. So will we do another biking head plan?
It is tough and, um. You put your wife in your hand. Connects to, connects to, connects to another lot, bikes?
So I, I see it coming from Olympic. Are we just not highlighting where it would also would go along the highway basically?
I think we want to avoid the highway with biking.
Because what's the, is that all Caltrans? Can we not put a bike path on the side of the highway? I mean, just like they did that little trail for, uh, Middle Town.
Weekend.
No, before Caltrans, uh, they just did that path in Middletown, right? I guess we need a casino in order for the path. The one they did out casino, that's, uh. ATP. They just got with ATP money. That would be awesome to see that parallel to the highway. Stay bothering someone that is, uh, on a park that has people walking them. They're actually doing bike.
Well, then we would have to have our customers run the, run this down.
I would love to see a parallel bike path. And then Marin, they have that, where you're going into Mill Valley, and there's that little side bike path on the side.
We'd have them run it all the way. We'd have to go county and Caltrans wanted to go through the county. Because you don't want a bike clinic that just stops at the edge of the city.
No. It would be nice to complete the, the circle to meet all the way back up to this one, so then you can keep going a little further as well.
Could you write that up? Take a pen.
If we can connect this bike path.
When you say this, you mean 20?
Well, there's the green right here, so that's a.
Whatever that is.
Potential bike path coming in from the county, clearly, area. And if that, that can continue in parallel to the highway all the way to here, then you can go back into town and do all the rest. It would be nice if it was still connected here as well.
Sure.
I don't know.
You don't. Connect it all the way down to here. Separated bike path here.
We, we have.
So that would be a locking lane as well as a bike path.
Very successful, right? If we have better roads, we could have more.
You have, I think, a double central go through there, right?
Yeah, I think you're right.
Or even better, now that you said that, stop the bike path right here so they have to come down.
That's right.
You're right. And now that sort of ramps works, you want them to come.
We're putting a migration station here and one right there.
They gotta go over those bridges, right? Over here with the.
The bridges, but just over there, by Casco, that's it.
Well, at that point, you might just go back on to the highway and then back off the highway or something. We could work with the M E O with that one.
Doug, you, you drinking with him?
He likes bike paths.
I'm gonna have to pay a little bit, a couple million dollars to the overpasses and.
Okay, it's all this money.
All the state.
Anything else? Okay, it's okay to leave that in. Leave these paths in.
No, I, I like, yeah.
You can bike right, right?
We need to, I've spent a while, but I used to run it like, uh, through the snow, through the rain, it was fun.
Quite a part of the thing, like, make sure you drive on out here. It's a really narrow spot.
Why don't we have a path that goes over here to the park?
Is that the State Park? Yeah. Because that's just, that's a white bridge path. Yeah.
Probably should do that too.
So what, what is this?
So you want to go right from here.
That's existing.
Take it down.
So just take it right here.
It says existing bike.
It's existing bike lanes. Yeah, because we already widened, uh, Old, Old Highway 53 on the NASCAR. Old 53's done. And I like what you guys did on Dam Road as well. That was an awesome extension right there. So actually, this actually already is in existence. That's not a new bike path. I see it right there, correct?
This is existing?
Because that's where McDonald's and, uh, Walmart is. This is the downhill that used to be like, ugh, going down the hill. It was horrible. And you guys. So that's all, that's all due. Yeah, that's all done. It's all complete.
Can you do that again?
Too drowsy.
I used to have my son in the backseat. That's what he would do. He would yell, ah!
So you think this is existing?
Yeah, I think so. Maybe not have, yeah, that's, that's just the old evidence. Just the one we had.
For the bikes?
Yeah. You definitely.
Oh, the one on that road?
You had to delay on that for three years.
New York Alums, archaeologists.
Three and a half years, actually.
Archaeological.
Okay, let's do the last but not least. Question is whether we want to even have a trails plan. This is the plan from Knott Guy Trails Plan. And, um, I have the same things as I have.
Right.
But there might be some differences. I don't know.
Well, there's that green line that went right out there.
I think if you, if you want to, you know, water trail, water trail should at least go to our parks. Up here.
So what we, what previous council is talking about was doing a, a pathway from here, from whatever we get development, get across the street over here, all the way down to the actual State Park.
A water trail?
Yep.
So what do you mean a water trail? Like a boardwalk?
Boardwalk, trail, all the way down Lake Shore, all the way down. And so Knott Day Ridge Trail is actually. We're still mapping on part of it, uh, we're.
Well, this is a general.
This is just a, just a general, a general. Yeah, I would say from, from, uh, right here, Austin, all the way at least till Red Bud.
And this is a, a water trail?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Talk about, here, talk about trying to buy right away.
So you need to wear your R W.
Get R W. For that lane.
The water part is kayak trail.
What's this?
So ideally, I think what they'd want to do is take this here, all the way down, down to the State Park, and loop it back. And that goes through the backside of the State Park, that's backed up and goes on to Point Lakeview. And that will go all the way back to Eli Stagecoach, which there goes up to South Peak. From South Peak, you can go down multiple acres, down to Black Forest. Back to the Kelseyville side, back behind to the High School. There's gonna be trails all over the place. Then they're talking about taking it, moving all the way back to the Upper Lake, going up to the mountain range, and comes back all the way down here.
Just all the way around.
Then coming back from the Oaks, back down the hill.
But the whole idea of, of doing this kind of thing is the fact that you do a little piece of it, probably some more dollars, and you do another piece. Would you have that start from?
Yeah, right. And that's what they've been doing. I mean, they're, they've been putting up all their emphasis on Knott Day. Those, those trails up there. Isn't this area the L M land or that new, uh, let's talk about the, um, the Snow Mountain Berriesa Park. Where is that compared to where we are and how can we set up a trail to lead from Clear Lake to that new National Monument? Isn't it, isn't this area?
I think it's further up from here.
Oh, I don't know.
That, that thing's pretty vast. I don't know exactly where it might be. Because I know it, it burned a whole lot during the Rocky Fire, and the Rocky Fire was right in our backyard. How far did it?
Couldn't you get out there by Morgan Valley?
How far, how far is it from the dam itself?
I thought you were talking about Snow Mountain.
Yeah, it goes from Snow Mountain all the way to Berriesa. It's a huge area, and we are supposed to be one of the gateway cities into this National Monument. And so if we don't have a trail.
And so if we don't have a trail.
That was all started with the, with the Elk Foundation when they took over that property and BLM came and bought it all up and they started planting elk out there. They've got trail systems out there. They've got places you can go park and equestrian sites, load your horses. They've got bathrooms. They're trying to do some.
Yeah, no, they're working on it right now. I just got an email that they were doing some trouble even just the other day. I would just like to see how do we connect to that since we're a gateway city. I mean, does this lead?
How about right along Casque?
Casque is part of the Snow Mountain Berries.
So maybe we should connect that.
So we probably tying in.
But that should be a water trail too.
You want to trade along here?
Along Casque. Is that, where does that connect to that park though?
Where's, where's it go?
Along the boundary.
You should have seen me try to open it earlier.
It's around here?
Yeah, because our boundary is Casque.
My lawyer used to go right now on the property.
Just call it a new trail. Let these people know.
I got to look up to see what, where that specific location is.
Way down there, right?
Good enough to Dan.
So if you designate that.
Now, the other, the other question for me is there, in the package I put together, there's these maps of state routes to school. And there's like three. And I was thinking we'd just add them into, into here somehow. Is that here everybody?
Yes.
I don't know, but I figured.
Which should be that, yeah.
Yeah, that's the dump right there. Take a trail right by the dumps.
Yeah, but you go, and go in that, there's a little road that goes off. And there's houses back there. Runway goes way back there.
One of these roads goes over to Highway 20. Yeah, sure. It's this one, but there is one of them back here.
I know Ogden Canyon Road that backed up back on 20.
Well, that's, you know, that is pretty if you.
It dumps out, it dumps out and that's Old 53.
It's in 53, right before 20.
That sounds like a city.
Yeah. I've been back there.
Why is it scary?
There's some.
Interesting humans back there?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Interesting occupation.
Wow, shoot.
Horticulture. Remember, remember when they found that girl in the box? That was up there. Remember that girl that was being captured?
Metal box place.
There's another trail here maybe. I don't know.
So here is a really horrible picture. Because here is, I mean, it's a horrible picture, but there's a tip of the lake where Clear Lake is and it starts just east of what we're looking at. So that trail right there looks like it's going into it. Wish you could get a better picture.
I have Google or Pro probably can tell that it doesn't make sparks.
I just did a search for Snow Mountain Berries amount.
It doesn't matter where this goes, but it's going up into that territory. We're not going to be able to do anything about that anyway.
We should have some kind of extension.
And I think that is the best way to connect because again, we're looking at it right here where the lake ends right here. All you got to do is go straight east. So that's, that's heading quite towards that western.
Is this, are these dead end targets?
I don't believe it connects directly. That was the whole area.
Well, you have to jump over the highway.
Yeah, that's a dead end. Those are dead ends. Oh, yes, it is. That used to be, yeah.
Yeah, that's Davis and that's Davis again.
Yeah, that's where the funny.
Moss comes in now.
So we had a maybe extension.
And the road comes down and then there's that one little driveway that curves back there. Is there a stop sign still there? I thought I saw one. No, it's a dead end. You don't have a stop sign.
I didn't hear what you said. That's what I.
Anything else?
These are trails. Are we going to mark here that this is a trail? Since that's the white.
That was bike. That was bikes.
Yes, state parks. Yeah. That's the beauty. We asked them to pay for it.
It's over there.
Anything else?
Yeah, it's already there.
Yeah, it already has.
No, I think everybody's just hungry and thirsty and tired, so.
I bought pizza two hours ago, but I didn't. Something for my kids and my wife and then I left.
You're a good dad.
So anyway, I guess to wrap up. I put in a bunch of new policies and things in here, circulation and noise. And, you know, and then we have pretty much buy-off on the state for the safety elements. I wasn't really going to mess with that. But I wanted to make sure you're on board with all of this. You know, we don't really have time to go through all the policies, but if one of you sees something that jumps out at you, that doesn't sound right, to go through the, the drive policies, give me a call. Well, the policies I can, I can have for the next couple of weeks. Not much for that. But I'm wanting, the Lankey's map is really important. So I can tie everything down for the circulation.
Gary, is there a PDF or something like that you can distribute?
For what? Yeah, it's on, it's online. It's, it's on our.
It is.
It is, isn't it?
Was something that can be blown up that people can really see detail?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I own the website.
Yeah, you can zoom in so now.
Is it, is it on there? It's not on your web.
Is it on our website?
It's on the website. I was kind of, I didn't put the whole package in the, on the website. I was a little bit concerned that people might.
But it was in the package that you said they can zoom.
But yeah, we can, we can put, we can put that, we can put those things in the website. I'll do that this week. So you'll have access to it. And I can just send you the, you can send it to them. I don't know if I have all your emails. I probably do.
I've got them. I can just send them all in one package.
Well, no, I do. I have all your emails. Melissa sent that whole thing. I just, I'll send a mass email tomorrow with, with all the maps. It's not going to have these corrections up here.
That was a nice little jump that was in there.
Yeah, 10%.
Do you know something that we don't know?
Due to unforeseen natural disasters, there will be an increase to get away.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Was there anything else you guys want to talk about?